Okay, our presentations and proclamations. Our first item of business is swearing in our new officer.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Trent, Honorable City Council. It's the honor and a pleasure to be here tonight. Tonight, we swear in Esmeralda Gonzalez as a full sworn officer. We introduced Esme and swore her in as a reserve officer back in August of 2022. And this young lady was brought on with the condition that she complete the third mod of the academy, which she graduated from CR in December of 2022, and has kept every bit of her bargain with the city thus far, demonstrating exemplary dedication and maturity, and has hit the ground running in her field training officer program. So I did get to meet with Esme and her family at graduation at CR, and one of the promises that I made was that her daughter would get to pin her when we swore her in as a full-time sworn police officer. And so, without further ado, if I could invite Mayor Trent down to administer the oath. And Esmeralda, would you join us with Angela Conley? And Esme's daughter Andrea is here, and she'll be doing the penning.
I, Esmeralda Gonzalez, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of California, and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I will take this obligation freely, that I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of leaving, without any mental reservation or purpose of leaving, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duty upon which I am about to enter, and that I will, I will, I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter, the duties to which I am about to enter. Congratulations, the City of California.
Thank you, and welcome to the city. We're very, very happy to have you. Now, we have the introduction of a new utility two-worker.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to introduce our newest utilities two-worker, Andy White. Andy's been with us for about four to six weeks now, and, you know, we've experienced a lot in that time, earthquakes and storms, so this is where I can say, Andy, it was all just a hazing ritual. We really needed to see how you would perform under pressure, and, you know, it'll be smooth sailing after here. So, all jokes aside, it was really nice to have, you know, that extra staffing level up with a lot of the things that we faced, and, you know, he brought a positive attitude, really wanted to learn and do everything he can to help all those needed the city. So we really appreciate him for that. Other than that, he comes with a broad range of experience across a lot of trades, including firefighting, and tree work, and plumbing, and other carpentry work, and I think he's going to bring a nice, well-rounded skill set to our utilities team, and we're excited to see his growth here with the city. I did talk to him earlier today, and just kind of see, you know, what he did or maybe didn't want me to say. But one thing he said that really kind of stuck with me is, you know, when he was a firefighter, he really enjoyed being part of public service, and I think that's a big part of what we do here, of course, and having a mind for that, and a want to do your community good is really that integral thing that, you know, we can only hope for in our employees. So with that, I just want to say I'm pleased to present Andy White here tonight, and if you'd like to come on up, Andy. Thank you.
Like you said, I'm Andy White. I'm happy to be here, and I'm excited for the opportunity to serve the people in public of the friendly city of Fortuna. Thanks.
Welcome. Our next item is a proclamation, and Mike Losi is going to read that, and Florence Parks will accept it via Zoom.
This is a proclamation and recognition supported in National Mentoring Month, January 2023. Whereas this year, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast, CASA of Humboldt, and Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods celebrate the 138 combined years of service provided to the youth in Humboldt County. Together, it is recognized that the future of Humboldt County rests on the success of its youth. And whereas, a mentor is caring, consistent presence who devotes time to help a young person develop personal strength and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship. Quality mentoring encourages positive choices, promotes self-esteem, supports academic achievement, and introduces young people to new ideas. Whereas, research shows that young people matched with a caring adult through a quality mentoring program are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college, 81% more likely to report participating regularly in extracurricular activities and sports, 78% more likely to volunteer, and twice as likely to say they held a leadership position than those who did not have a mentor. Whereas, youth development experts agree that mentoring is critical to the social, emotional, and cognitive development of youth, helping them navigate the path to adulthood more successfully. And whereas, our community has a number of community volunteers, teachers, advocates, and many others who support the mentoring movement, and work selflessly to improve our children's odds for success. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Fortuna recognizes January 2023 as National Mentoring Month, and thanks all of our local heroes who participate in quality mentoring programs to equip our youth with the tools to lead healthy and productive lives. The City Council also calls on residents to help close the gap between availability of mentors and the number of children facing challenging circumstances who would love to spend time with a Big Brother, Big Sister, CASA Advocate, or Boys and Girls Club of the Redwoods mentor. Signed, Septieth Day of January 2023, at the City of Fortuna, State of California, and signed by Tammy Trent, Mayor, City of Fortuna.
Thank you. Next item are the quarterly reports from the Fire and Police Department, so I'll ask Chief Brown to come up and give his first, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Trent and Councilmembers.
Mayor Trent, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. There was somebody to receive the proclamation on the Zoom feed. I wasn't sure if you were aware.
How can I give it to him on Zoom?
You just used your microphone. Sorry, she's available to unmute herself. It's Florence, her name is Florence Parks.
Okay, Florence, did you want to say anything?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Happy National Mentoring Month to everyone. This is a great time for us to bring visibility to our youth and the needs of our community. I am so excited to share with you some of the highlights that our team has been working towards in the Eel Valley. We recently shored up a MOU with East Fortuna High School and Walker Elementary School to do our after-school program there, where we're in the middle of matching a few young people with mentors. We also have our community-based mentoring program where all youth and any family member can enroll their child to participate in our program, because the statistics show that all of our children need at least five positive adults in their lives to thrive. There's a wonderful opportunity coming up. We have our 40th Year Celebrating Bowl for Kids' Sake, and this year, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the North Coast is going wild for our 40th Zoo-tastic Bowl. So we're excited. It's kind of a play on Zootopia, which has such a wonderful message, which, you know, the star in the show is looking for and seeking her potential and to follow her dreams, and in every direction she's told no, until she finds those right people that champion her way and open doors for her, and she takes the step, and she steps through them. So we're hoping that on March 3rd and 4th, we'll see some of you. Thank you to so many of you who already participate in one of Humboldt's best events of the year, the Bowl for Kids' Sake. It will be at Harbor Lanes in Eureka on March 3rd and 4th, and we're hoping that you come out in style for our 40th year. And just, you can see the background behind me. It's going to be a fun event, full of, you know, we're kind of coining our zoo, our local zoo. So we have some brown bears, and otters, and other creatures. So we're hoping that you come in and dress up and enjoy the festivities with us, and also help us to have the resources to continue this valuable work. We couldn't do this without this very important fundraiser, and to bring visibility to the importance of the mentors in our life that help guide us and walk through situations that we're overcoming. So thank you so much for your time tonight, and we are honored to accept this proclamation and move forward with this great work.
Thank you, Florence, and we'll make sure you get a copy of the proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'm not skipping anybody. We'll go back to Chief Brown.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Congratulations, Cal. So I'm going to give a year-end review this time around to let everybody know what has been going on in Fortuna Fire for the last year. We ran a total of 1,500 calls exactly. Try and figure that one out, how it ends exactly at 1,500, especially with what happened at the end of the year. There was quite a few calls thrown in there the last few weeks. Of those 1,500 calls, only 116 of them were fires. So if you think about joining a fire department to fight fire, that represented 7.73% of our calls involve fire. 92-something percent involve something other than fire. Rescue and medical, which is a big chunk of those, 65.5%, 982 calls for service for rescue and medical, so that's all our medical aids and our traffic accidents. We had 98 traffic accidents, so if you want to figure about one every four days, we could improve our driving around here a little bit. Hazardous conditions, which are power lines down, things of that nature, gas leaks, those were 53 calls for the year. Service calls, this is where mutual aids go, but it's also where Lyft assists go, just by the way the coding is. We ran 65 of those, 10 mutual aids out of our area. We have one of only two aerials, ladder trucks in Humboldt County, so on any commercial projects or commercial fires, we respond with that truck. Good intent calls, 205, 94 of those were smoke checks, somebody calling and saying, hey, my neighbor's burning, go check it out. So that was 94 of those. And false alarms, 79, for a total of 1,500 calls a year. As our planning, as we move forward, we're constantly trying to figure out how to complete our staffing program so that we can free up law enforcement, so that they don't have to cover any of our calls, which is what just happened when you heard my radio go off. We're not staffed, which means Chief Day's officers have to go to that call instead of my folks, and so we're trying to work on everything creative we can to free up more time for them to do law enforcement stuff. We are currently partnering with College of the Redwoods Wildland Academy, so we're offering free boarding for four of their members. In exchange, they have to give us four shifts a week, four 12-hour shifts a week, so they've got to come with medical training. We interviewed seven and chose three. Two of them happen to be brothers out of San Diego, so that tells you how many Fire Land, Wildland Academies there are in the state. They're coming from San Diego because this is the soonest that they can get into one. And so we're also working with Humboldt State, now that they have a fire science technologies program going, to get some of their folks to staff, so that we can pull some more resources in to help us cover our shortfalls in our own staffing program. And currently, we're probably at about a 76% staffing ratio, where PD is covering about 23%, we're covering the rest. We also put in resident living quarters in Hydesville, so we have two new rooms in Hydesville to take on more residents, and the new station in Roneville will have two living quarters with two beds apiece, so an additional room for four more residents. We continue to go after any funding source we can. This year, with everybody's budget, everything cost more money this year, so we're constantly looking for any grant fund that's out there to support our programs. We did start a support program last year. We had people that wanted to donate their time in various ways other than firefighting, so we have people that staff just for medical response. We have people that staff to help out our junior firefighter program. We have an up-and-going CERT program now, so if anybody's interested in joining CERT, we finally got a person to take the lead on that, and is growing that program well. We're always looking for people that want to help in the office and do clerical work, and if anybody wants to wash a fire truck, I've got plenty. Come on down. And I did hear earlier, did he leave? Where's my guy with the firefighting experience that the city just hired? How come, you know, he left before I could get an application to him? And our last major project, our infrastructure project, is what you see going on in Roneville Road. That is our new Roneville Station, which will take the place of our Campton Heights Station, which no longer fits modern fire trucks. They are too tall to fit into that station. And so you can see the, if you go by now, it's across, next to Castrol, it's across from, what is that street it's across from? Anyway, Palomino, there you go. It's across from Palomino. You'll see the retaining walls that are up, so you kind of get an idea of how the station is going to be situated on that property. We're hopeful by the end of 2023, we'll see a station there, and that will move all of the equipment out of the Campton Heights Station and move into the Roneville Station. And again, that one will come with two sets of living quarters. And that is the last of our infrastructure projects that we had planned. We had planned on the training facility. I still have a classroom to build, and I'm not sure where that funding is going to come from yet, but this is the last major project for us. Now it'll just be trying to maintain the current facilities that we have. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you guys might have for me.
Any questions?
I do. The Wildland people that you talked about at CR, now those are the Wildland Fire Academy people that are going through?
Correct. They're students that put on, CR teams up with Cal Fire to put on a Wildland Academy. That's how Cal Fire gets their new folks up and trained, and we're trying to steal a little bit of their time while they're here to help our program out, because none of them are going to typically stick around here. They're going to go somewhere else probably with that training and get hired. But while they're here, the City of Fortuna can benefit from the fact that they come with some medical training. So, yeah, they're all typically, you know, 19 to 25-year-old kids that are just getting into the fire service and on the Wildland side.
So they will respond out on a truck, or with somebody, or by themselves?
They will respond with our other personnel and our medical staffing. They won't respond in a fire capability for us. Now, we have one that does come with quite a bit of experience that I'm going to have a hard time telling him he can't get on an engine, but there'll be some additional work we'll need to do just to make sure that, you know, you can come with a piece of paper that says you can do something, you got to prove to me you can. So he wants that opportunity, so he's going to get that chance.
Sounds like a great program.
We're hopeful. We're hopeful.
And then the new training tower, that's being used on a regular basis from the sounds of it?
Yeah, and we're working with our, you know, my training chief met with all the training officers in the valley and put together four quarterly drills where we're all going to get together now and train together on it, and it's available for everybody to use, and it's even used multi-discipline, so there's law enforcement using it, EMS has used it, and then we continue to use it.
Wow. Thank you. Great report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Police Chief Day.
Yes, thank you, and again, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So I think Siana is just trying to make a technical repair. It looks like we got it here, but we have a PowerPoint up, and Matt, could you go ahead and distribute those handouts? We're going to start with some statistics as we normally do for calendar year 2022, and before we get started, I know that I covered this during the summertime at the end of 2021, but I just want to kind of bring it back to the forefront before we go into these numbers tonight, because some of them are going to kind of make you fall out of your chair on both sides. So as you recall, in the summertime, I reemphasized the changeover from the traditional UCR, which was the Uniform Crime Report, that had been used nationally by agencies reporting what we used to refer to as Group One, or Type One, the Major Eight Crimes, to the FBI. And those crimes were categorically criminal homicide, forcible rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. And so back when we had the discussion at the half-year, I emphasized that with this changeover, which is nearly 90-some years later to the National Incident-Based Reporting System, there's just so much more data that's tracked. And so back then, most chief executives throughout the State of California, including the membership with Cal Chiefs, forecasted that statistical information for crime would go up in cities. And so we do see in some of that categorical information, some major rises, but to bring things back, so that we don't kind of overanalyze the data, we'll see that in some of these slides with the comparisons, we've tried to take that original, those original Major Eight UCR crimes and kind of show that the statistics have remained the same. But you do see those categorical raises in areas that were never tracked before. So we'll go over those slowly, and if you have any questions, you can refer to your handouts, and I'll take some questions at the end. We'll start with domestic violence, so if we could go to the first slide, Siana. So to put things in perspective, I believe last year at the end of 2021, I reported 150, 151 approximately DV-related calls. What Neighbors has given law enforcement agencies the ability to do is confirm the relevance of those calls for service after they are investigated and/or arrests are made or sent through the judicial process. So we see an alarming decrease from that 150, 151 number that was reported at the end of 2021 to where we are now. It was 61 confirmed EV-related calls for service, those are verified through the Neighbors cyber system. We had 30 felony investigations, 30 misdemeanor investigations, 40 physical arrests for domestic violence-related offenses, and 20-plus cases were submitted for arrest warrant to the district attorney. Next slide. So this is where we've polled the old top eight Part One crimes from the UCR that are now part of 34, approximately 34, 35 different reporting areas in the Group A crimes that are associated with a new National Incident-Based Reporting System. So here on the slide and on the handout, you'll see we have zeros across the board for criminal homicide, negligent manslaughter, and justifiable homicide in calendar year 2022. We recorded 10 rapes, seven robberies, 19 aggravated assaults, 25 burglaries, 161 larcenies, those are general larcenies, 26 motor vehicle thefts, and seven arsons. In comparison with last year with Part One crimes, we had zero homicides, two forcible rapes, six robberies, seven aggravated assaults, 37 burglaries, 184 larcenies, and 35 motor vehicle thefts, and eight arsons. So it stayed pretty much consistent with an increase in just a few of the original eight areas. Next slide. Oh, we're there. So featured on this slide, and as a part of your Group A offense report handout, you see all of the other areas that are now being tracked that historically weren't tracked before with the Uniform Crime Report. And so I'm not going to go over all of them, but you can see how those are tracked now and reported through the system, which is, it's giving us increases in overall crime, because when you compare them to never being statistically tracked in the past, these are all numbers compared against zero. So nothing that's earth-shattering here, I mean, we had 149 simple assaults, that was somewhat of a high number for a simple misdemeanor assault, but everything else is pretty consistent with the last two years. Next slide. So I have a comparison here, again, just to put things in perspective. These are enforcement statistics that are comparable between the end of the year for 2021 and the end of the year for this last calendar year 2022. For 2022, our total incidents were down slightly from just over 20,000 to 17,953. Total arrests were down from 777 to about 709. And the only kind of attention-getter there is we did have an increase in felony arrests from 143 to 184. Total citations went down from 771 to 653. So this next slide is just featuring some statistical information from our POP team. This is one of the programs that I'm most proud of. It was something that really kind of morphed from one funded POP position. We expanded it to a team offering those team positions as an ancillary duty, meaning that these are officers that are just generally concerned with the quality of life for the City of Fortuna. They want to be involved, they want to make a difference, and, you know, so this team of five-member POP team that we have has really made a significant impact in the community over the last calendar year. Some of the statistics are listed, 96 felony arrests of major violators, 223 misdemeanors, 233 sites issued, 532 compliance checks for those that are under the court's jurisdiction for supervised release. So that's your people on probation, those that are on parole. These officers are going out conducting compliance checks, searches, and making sure that they are complying with the terms of their probation or parole. Our POP team was part of four different CERT callouts. That ranged from critical incidences in other jurisdictions to officer-involved shootings. 18 search warrants were served throughout the Eel River Valley, 20 homeless camp cleanups they participated in, as well as 174 homeless outreach contacts. They had 72 outside agency assists and were a vital part of the historic DTF seizure that happened, I believe it was in the fall of 2022. Our K-9 team and our POP team played a significant role in that. Onto K-9. So Canin Blitz, for those that aren't familiar, are both Belgian Malinois's that we acquired over the last two and a half years. Canin Blitz really hit the ground running with both of their handlers, and both teams have been incredibly successful in the short time that we've had them. Both dogs are dual-certified in enforcement and narcotic detection, both certified and trained in fentanyl detection. And as previously stated, as you'll see on the slide, there is a photo of that historic DTF seizure that was made later in 2022, which was just, it was incredible. It was pounds of fentanyl, cocaine, methamphetamine, kind of the whole broad spectrum of pharmaceuticals was seized, along with just over 115,000. One of the extra trainings we committed both of the K-9 teams to this year was the post-certified tracking course. The dogs are trained and working in the tracking of escaped human beings, criminals, picking up that odor and trying to, you know, pursue and maintain a high level of safety for the officers that are involved in the incident, as well as article fines. So the article fines is something that takes a little bit of time. I mean, the handlers really put in a lot of time on and off duty, you know, kind of getting their dogs programmed into what exactly they're training them with. But, you know, dogs can be proficient in almost any type of article, it's just the time that it takes spending getting trained for it. So both doing very well, as stated before, and we're very proud of our K-9 teams. Provided a grant funding update in the summertime. Thankfully, the 2021 Rural Assistance Grant was finally realized. We did receive two vehicles in December of 2022, so it was right after Christmas. Both vehicles are hybrid model Ford Explorer Pursuit packages. We had a meeting with our city mechanic and public works this morning, and those vehicles are scheduled to be ready for the road anytime in the next two weeks. So our plan is, once we get the graphics on, we get them finalized, we'd like to let the council and community members look inside the vehicles, maybe at the next council meeting before or after. What's that?
Take him for a drive.
I don't know, Mike, that might be a stretch. Moving on to the 2022 Community Facilities Grant, both of them were USDA grants, were still delayed. On that grant, we were approved for the delivery of four new Ford utilities, similar vehicles, hybrid or not, they're Ford Explorer Pursuit packages. The updates that we continue to get are not positive, there are chip shortages, there was overordering with Ford Motor Company, so we are being told at this point, three to four months, so that puts us in the summertime. Having that information, we are exploring other opportunities, like looking at the Chevy Tahoe and other things that might be more realistic as far as the timeline. So I just wanted to make a couple comments towards the end. First off, Measure E continues to serve the police to serve the police department, as does Measure Z, with giving us the tools to serve the community. We're so very thankful every year for the support and assistance that we get from those two measures and the community and the fundraising that goes along with our K-9 program and the other things that we ask for assistance with. It was important for me that you hear from me tonight about the culture and the morale of the police department. Both of those are extremely healthy. We continue to take care of our members and the community and, you know, just make sure that the right decisions for our personnel and our culture are being made. You know, I think it was evident, and Chief Brown hit on it earlier, but, you know, on the morning of the earthquake, I'm getting a little older. It took me a little time to find my boots and my car keys after everything kind of got spread around the house. But, you know, by the time I got to the police department, most of our officers had already self-dispatched. And then I was shortly joined by the mayor after about 15 minutes of arriving, and I was still trying to get a cup of coffee and wipe the sleep from my eyes. So it just kind of goes back to reinforce what I said about the culture. Our men and women with the police department are here to serve the community, and they take their jobs very seriously, and it's an honor to serve. I'm extremely proud of the department and all of the personnel, and honored to serve the community as chief of police. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That was a good report. Also want to add that our police station should be completed about the same time as our new fire station.
Yes.
So it'll be nice to have both of those. Anybody have any questions for Chief?
I do. With regard to the Group A offenses, so the domestic violence cases are, they're looped into those Group A offenses, whether it's crimes against persons, like, they're all looped in there.
Yeah, correct. It's, cybers is really something that Lieutenant Everhart here has spearheaded. But those crimes go through a filtration process through the program so that if it is an aggregated, some sort of aggravated circumstance, it would fit into that category versus another. But with domestic violence, as you see in the handout, we now have a separate tracking mechanism built in there where, you know, before, our reports weren't necessarily verified numbers. I mean, we could take that raw data manually through just a call for service. You know, we talk about dispatch bias and interpretation. A lot of those calls that maybe came in from a third-party reporting party where it appeared to be domestically related, you know, we had no way of going back and verifying that unless we polled every report manually. And now through the system, we're able to verify through the adjudication or the conclusion of the case, arrest records, that it was in fact domestically related. And so that's where we see the huge drop-off.
So with regard to the simple assault category, can we assume that a lot of that increase could be the domestic violence cases that are now set out but included in the Group A offenses?
I think it's certainly possible, Councilmember Loci, but I would have to do some digging into the cybers, just to kind of get more of a factual answer for you.
And then the probation, parole, compliance checks, searches, and that type of thing. It used to be we would have a county-wide program where every agency would get together and locations would be, you know, would be selected and different groups would be sent out to do the probation, parole searches. So that Fortuna might be, might have one officer combined with a sheriff's officer or sheriff's deputy and Eureka Police Officer. Are those still being done, or is it pretty much the POP team doing our own thing here in Fortuna?
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, my almost three years of being here, I have seen it a couple of times. I think the desire from the allied agencies is to continue with that type of collaborative program. But as, as you know, and most community members know, the staffing shortages that have hit the allied agencies in the North State have, you know, essentially crippled any type of special enforcement. So, I mean, I'm not speaking outside of anything that hasn't been publicly released in the press, but, you know, there was a time when Eureka PD and Arcata PD were reeling back all special services just to, you know, restock and keep their patrol numbers up. And so, you know, we've just really benefited here in Fortuna, you know, as far as on paper. Our staffing is full, minus one dispatcher that, you know, is getting ready to, you know, finish her background investigation portion right now. But, you know, we've benefited from the culture in the department, our way of life, and the support that we get here in Fortuna to keep those staffing levels. And so we've been able to, you know, use different methodologies in order to kind of keep those things like compliance checks up. But I don't, you know, going, segueing back to the original question, the allied agencies are all invested in each other, and collaboration is kind of what makes the merry-go-round. And, you know, we all want to get back to that. But, you know, as it stands for all agencies throughout California, I hear this from my colleagues in Southern Cal, the Bay Area, recruitment, retention, and staffing is probably the biggest problem facing law enforcement right now.
It's been a long time since we've, I can't even remember having full staffing right now. We've always been searching for officers as well as dispatchers. You're doing an excellent job with that and with the morale of the police department.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent report. Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for oral public, or oral comments from the public. Any member in the public can speak on anything that's not on the agenda, and you have three minutes. Is there any via Zoom?
I don't see any.
Okay, well, seeing none. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Let's see, we have City Council Minutes, Administrative Department Monthly Report, Community Department Monthly Report, Finance Department, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, Public Works, River Lodge, and Report of Disbursements. Authorize the city manager to continue teleconferencing public meetings for the city council and city committees, commissions, and boards. Approval of grant application for submittal of USDA Rural Department loan and grant assistant programs for River Lodge improvements. Does anybody want to prove, pull any of those?
I would like to pull K.
Okay. None? Okay, go ahead.
Maybe Erin would be able to answer this question. It looks like that the city with this grant would be required to have quite a large amount of matching funds, at least maybe close to half. So, and apparently we're looking to fiscal year 23, 24, that those funds would be required to be put into the kitty for the matching funds. My question is, is there a chance that this grant would come through in the current fiscal year where we would have to come up with those funds out of Measure E money? Because I'm thinking that there, the Measure E money might be a little bit stretched, depending on, you know, the direction that this council goes with regard to the police department project.
Yeah. So upon submission of this grant, if we're awarded it, we have a certain amount of time to, you know, go out and perform these. And so we could stall for a couple of months. Say if it gets approved in April, we could stall until July and then go out and do these projects and still be within that grant timeframe to be able to be reimbursed for those activities. So, yeah, we could safely say that we could wait until next fiscal year's budget to include these match amounts into that budget before we go and spend them.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Is that all?
That's it.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Do we need a roll call vote for that, or was that just a voice vote?
Voice vote is fine.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item of business is a public hearing for the first reading to consider repealing and replacing Title 15, Building and Construction Division, General Chapter 15.10 Building Codes with the 2022 California Building Code as mandated by the California Building Standards Commission and Department of Housing and Community Development Ordinance 2019-741. Staff report?
Mayor Longstreet, Gary.
So we have Gary Goode, our building official here tonight, who will provide a brief staff report for you guys.
I'm going to keep this pretty sweet and quick. Since last week, we only had, two weeks ago when we brought this up, we only had one request on a change. This is for the California Building Codes 2022, which go into effect January 1st of 2023. State is, as I said before, state has already adopted all the building codes in for us. What we adopted is the administrative portion of how we operate. Every town operates a little different. It fits with how they're going to, you know, perceive of the codes and so on. Question was asked within our Fortuna Municipal Code, the 1510-015, Section A was, there was a section within there, it was built into the codes, into the building codes already, but it was requested we actually put it into this, this portion here, which I agree with too. After putting it in there and reading it, it's cleaner, it's more understandable, and so on, which is, it gives the building, portion was added was, the building official is authorized to grant in writing one or more extensions of time or periods, not more than 180 days each. For extension, extensions shall be requested in writing a justifiable clause of demonstration. What this is, without reading all the rest of it, it's the building permit when it stalls, or, as I used before, life happens. Something comes in and they can come in and request, and we extend it out. Fortuna is very, very well-known for doing this and adding in stuff like that. We don't run a hard nose, never have. It's never been requested we do that. We'd rather work with it and get the people their permits and get their projects done, and so on. And that's what, we're here to help, not to make it harder on somebody. So, but that was a request. It was put into it, and that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Just a comment. I do appreciate the addition of that information on the extension. It just makes it a little bit cleaner and lets people know when they first come in, you know, what they're, what they're up against. So thank you for doing that.
And it's used, it is used quite a bit through the year, I bet, so.
Okay, we'll open public comment to the public. Anybody have any questions, or any on Zoom? Nope. Okay, we'll close public comment. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll move to introduce and hold a first reading of Ordnance 2023-758. Continue the public hearing to Tuesday, February 6th, 2023, for a second reading, and read this by title only.
Second.
Roll call?
Ordnance 2023-758, in ordinance of the City Council of the city of Fortuna, repealing and replacing Title 15, Buildings and Construction, Division One, Generally, Chapter 15.10 Building Code of the Fortuna Municipal Code with the 2022 California Building Codes. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
I almost answered that. Our next item is council review and decision, discussion on commissions and committee applications. Let me get to that one. And our Measure E Committee, we had renewals, which I'm glad all of those people put in new applications because they're knowledgeable and very good on this committee. We had one new one. Sue Long, ex-mayor, applied. I did interview you because, interview her to make sure that she was qualified for this committee. She does know a little bit about it, so these are, those are my recommendations. You have the list of names. I have Debbie August, Donald Ingram, Joseph Hardcastle, and Sue Long for Measure E. And then for the Planning Commission, Sandy Blakely, Brian Bennett, and Joshua Doris for the Planning Commissions. Those are my recommendations.
Excellent recommendations.
So do we need a motion to accept those?
Any public comment?
Oh, sorry. Anybody want to speak on any of those? Nope. Okay. Huh? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second.
Roll, is it roll call?
It is. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Oh, yes. I'm reading my next one here. I'm still new at this. Okay, then our next item is council review and discussion on Fortuna Business Improvement District Advisory Committee applications. And we had some good applications also for this one. Let me get back to that. Danny Kelly, Frederick Robinson, Michelle Oliver, Amber Woodward, Doug Strel, and Laura Shears, is that how you say that? And Doug Strel only wanted to be appointed if there wasn't enough people on there, which there was. So he asked me not to put his name in there, but I feel that all the other ones are well-qualified and will make up a good committee. Any questions on any of those from council?
Just a comment. We really appreciate you folks stepping forward and agreeing to be on F-Bid. It's been a difficult year, to say the least, getting F-Bid through the difficulties that they've had over the last year, year and a half. So we really appreciate you people stepping up, and we're hoping for the best. And I'm sure that you will make sure that this program works for the benefit of all of Fortuna, so.
And it's nice to get good, qualified people that apply for this.
Yes.
So it makes us happy. This, this is a new board, so at this point, they aren't staggered. All of our boards, generally, we stagger so we don't get a whole new committee all at one time. So this will probably be brought back, and our terms will be split a little bit. So we get half the committee every two years, goes up for renewal. So do we have a motion? Oh, wait a minute, I have to open public comment. Anybody from the public like to say anything? From Zoom? Okay, we'll close public comment. Now, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments for the F-Bid.
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Next item of, and thank you all for coming for this too, is to amend the city's annual fee schedule for fiscal year 22, 23, to provide for amended rental rates for the use of the River Lodge and the Monday Club, Resolution 2023-01. We have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. So the River Lodge staff have been working diligently on implementing a new software product called Tyler Parks and Recreation. That staff will be utilizing to receive payments, reservations, et cetera. And so as part of the implementation process, it has become necessary to make some changes to the River Lodge and Monday Club fee schedule in order to provide for more straightforward and streamlined reservation process for customers. The primary change requested is to adjust the hourly rates for both the River Lodge and Monday Club to be one-fourth of the daily rental rate and remove the four-hour minimum charge. Making this change will allow staff to set up the software's rental calendar for each room to charge the hourly rate for reservations while also including the maximum daily charge. And then the second change being requested is unrelated to the software change, but because of because of a recent request, we wanted to bring it forward for council approval, and that is to include the Garden Club's annual home tour as part of the annual exempt organization events under the Monday Club fee schedule. We have Jennifer Lorenzo, our River Lodge manager here, who can help provide any additional information should council have any questions. But other than that, it is staff's recommendation to amend the city's annual fee schedule for fiscal year 2223 to provide for amended rental rates for the use of the River Lodge and Monday Club.
Thank you. Do we have questions from council? Nope. Open public comment. Anybody from the public have any comments? We'll close, that made your job easy. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to amend the city's annual fee schedule for fiscal year 2023 to provide for amended rental rates for the use of the River Lodge and Monday Club, Resolution 2301.
Are you going to second?
Yeah, second. I was waiting for her to do the roll call.
Okay.
Not only you, see.
Resolution 2023-01, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, amending the city's annual fee schedule for fiscal year 20222023 to provide for amended rental rates for the use of the River Lodge and Monday Club. Councilmember Conley?
Aye.
Councilmember Loci?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Next, we have city managers' report.
I'll just briefly go over the upcoming meeting dates. So our next council meeting is Monday, February 6th. Our next Planning Commission meeting is Tuesday, January 24th. Our next Measure E meeting is tomorrow, January 18th, at 5:30. And this is where, the meeting where we'll allow our public to come and provide input on funding for fiscal year 2324 Measure E monies. And then our next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting is Wednesday, February 1st, at 2:30. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any future agenda items from council? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Conley.
Thank you very much. I have yet to make my meeting, and it will happen next Monday, so I'll get my first report after that. But I want to thank the F-Bid members for, one, being here, I think that's a special thing, and helping out with the F-Bid program. I think that's a great program to have back, so thank you.
Councilmember Loci?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't have any meetings since the last council meeting, but this last Sunday, about 2:30 in the afternoon, you might remember, you heard the Fortuna Fire Siren go off. And I had the privilege of being at a memorial service for a fine gentleman, Ken Lidle, and he passed away last October. Ken was a longtime Fortuna Fire, volunteer fireman. He was an educator here in Fortuna. He was a superintendent of the Ronerville, which is now Ambrosini Elementary School, and Toddy Thomas. Ken was a great guy. He just gave a lot to the community. He served, he began serving, he served his whole life, but began in the military. He was in Special Forces in Vietnam. And his daughter made a point to say that the best he could tell her is that it was all classified. But it's one of those, he's, you know, he's just a person who you remember forever. He gave a lot to the community, and we will miss him totally. And our prayers will go to the family and all of his friends, so that's all I have.
Okay. Now my report. I had the pleasure of having a meeting with Morgan, our new F-Bid director. I was very impressed with her ideas for the new, we might not call it F-Bid, might be just Bid. She's thinking of that, but the, her new ideas and the new committee that we have going in this, I'm very excited because I really strongly feel this is going to be successful. So I'm very excited that all of you stepped up. It was very nice for her to go over all of this with me. It made me very excited about this new program. And Fortuna's very lucky. We have a lot of good volunteers for our committees. Measure E Committee, the F-Bid Committee, the Planning Commission, we've got good people on all of those, so I just want to thank everybody for that. And I think that was about all of my report, so I guess that's it for today.
Madam Mayor, you have Mayor Protem on Zoom.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about you. I'm not used to Zoom meetings. Yeah, we don't have his picture up here.
After being in person all these times, I'm not really used to them anymore either, but one's in handy. But I did have a historical commission meeting, which unfortunately I had to miss because I was sick, and Councilmember Mobley was going to fill in. I don't know if she made it or not, but I did not hear that she didn't, so I will assume that she did. So I thank her for that. Our, I made the Zoom portion for the orientation for the policy committees, and right now, I'm in Sacramento for the training, starting tomorrow. Will be attending that. And we do not have a H-Cog meeting this month, so I will have nothing to report on that until the third meeting in February. So that's my report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.